Roll call vote please.
Alderman Persick?
Here.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Here.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Here.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Here.
Alderman Tudor?
Here.
Alderman Stuter?
Here.
Seven present, one absent, you have it.
Thank you. Council got approval on the minutes for October 6th, 2015. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to accept the minutes for October 6th, 2015. And a motion by Alderman Larry Hall, who has a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Tudor. Any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Here.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent, you have it. Motion passes.
Thank you. Mayor's report. First item on the document is not listed. Apologize for that. We have Mr. Christie Ziller here, along with all his members from the Beta Club, correct? And they're going to do a presentation in regards to the Little Free Library Project. Christie, I will turn it over to you and your staff.
Thank you very much for the invitation to join in our today's city council meeting. My name is Christie Ziller and I'm a language arts teacher at Wilmington Middle School. I'm also the sponsor of our National Junior Beta Club, which is an aunt society at the middle school. We prepared a presentation. Girls have been meeting with me this week and I'd like to give you a copy of that before they get started. And then I'll introduce them for you. And also like to thank our principal, Mr. Adam Spicer, for also joining us. See you again. It's always great to have our students. We are honored to do that. I want to give a copy. And we introduce our representative from the Wilmington Middle School Beta Club. This is Emily Julie and Megan Morgan and Madeline Daddles. And they're going to be presenting our program about Little Free Library, our project, and our proposal. So I'll turn it over to the girls.
Little Free Library.
You can come up here.
Yeah, we don't bite. That's how we practice.
Thanks for the pleasure.
This is Little Free Library welcome. This is what we would propose to Wilmington. What is Little Free Library? It started in 2009 by Chad Ball from Wisconsin. It's achieving children's love and reading. The Little Free Library is a box with books every place in the city. Books can be lost in the box and taken by people in the city. These are examples of Little Free Libraries. The closest Little Free Library is in Ottawa. And children of all ages in the area will have access to free books. And a Little Free Library will encourage literacy. This is a map that was found on the littlefreelibrary.org website. And as you can see in our area, there are no current Little Free Libraries. And we'll be the first one to set up one in our area and have an example for others around our town. This is a platform we put on the Little Free Library. It shows that we are registered and will be put onto the map. And we even have our own register number. Beta Club will visit the Little Free Library and make sure it isn't damaged or vandalized. Make the materials for the Little Free Library, as well as the required concrete, and provide books for the Little Free Library. Middle school students and shop class will build the Little Free Library. Our request to the Wilmington City Council, permission to install the library at Children's Park, the North Trust, and someone to put the post's name and property. Reasons to say yes. Promotes reading and literacy in an area frequently visited by children by letting children borrow books for free. Provides public service opportunities for other Wilmington Beta Club members. The new library will be put on the map on the project's official website, increasing publicity and promoting Wilmington tourism. And being the first in the area to install a Little Free Library is something that marks an amazing progress. Does anyone have any questions?
Do you have your site picked?
We would want to have it in Children's Park, wherever the city council will allow.
Did you ever, I'm just going to think, I mean, granted we talked about there, but if this goes well, would you guys even consider to maybe even expand it to a few more within the city?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
I think it's a great idea.
Do you have any specific questions for the girls or prepared to answer questions?
Books can be left and be used by the general public.
Yes, and... The girls, would you like to respond to that question?
Yeah. Books will be provided at first and then people can come and take books from it and they can also put books in it. So it's just a return and reuse kind of...
And will you take donations for books if people have books that they want to donate?
Yeah, we'll be planning to run book drives.
Okay. All right, cool.
Okay, second question. As we know, as I look at this, I mean, it's a tremendous idea. Typically, how many books do you usually see stored in one of these three libraries? And do you guys cycle, do you guys kind of like cycle through the different ones at times?
The ones I have seen were two shelved and that's the one that Mr. Geis, our shop teacher, industrial arts teacher, he purchased all the materials, we paid for it. He is having his students in his first hour class build the library. So it is being constructed by students to help with the buy-in. And it will have two shelves and we're hoping that it'll have a range of different books in it. I would assume based on the area within inside the library that it could house probably 35 to 40 book titles in there, depending on the size of the books. It is primarily geared, I would say, for children, so we're hoping to visit it frequently just to make sure that there's appropriate books in there for students to be able, or children can borrow. Because I would hope that young children would be there too. At Children's Park, anyone can visit. There's a playground there, there's volleyball courts, skate park. So it's a range of children that live in that neighborhood, so I would hope that anyone can visit it. If there was adult titles in there, and you choose to see what they are, why don't these fall in? I don't actually have the dimensions. Mr. Geis has that. But I would say that it is not going to be any larger than probably two and a half feet square. And he's building it so that the roof of the Little Free Library house can open its door but protect from any weather damage of the books inside. And he's a very good construction person, so he's also put leather stripping, he's going to install leather stripping on the inside, so when it closes, it will keep out bugs and other little problems that could be in there besides the rain and water damage.
Are you going to provide the post or...
The post has been purchased already with the materials that Mr. Geis has...
You're just asking for city labor?
To put the concrete in, that is not one of the middle schoolers specialties or mine.
I think we can handle that.
I guess the labor of putting the post in. Once the post is in, Mr. Geis is going to measure out the box, put a platform on it so it can be adhered to the post.
I think we could definitely handle that. What do you think, Colby?
Should be a problem.
Any other questions?
Is there a lock system in this thing or a way to keep that door closed?
It'll just have a swing latch on it so that kids can have access to it. And it will not be far off the ground in case there are little children who'd like to make a selection. So he's already bought, he's already purchased all the materials. So I don't think it's going to be more than three feet off the ground. And there is a bench there, that's one of the guidelines that they ask, is if kids are going to use the library, have a place for them to be able to sit and read a book, look through it, make their choice before they leave. So I know it's a great site because I've been there myself. I live in that neighborhood, so...
Should keep a post item?
Yeah, I can keep a post item. As long as I'm still the sponsor, I don't know that I'll be up to Mr. Spicer's.
You know, I'd like to do is, if I can, if somebody would like to entertain a motion for the Beta Club to proceed with putting the free library in the children's museum, we can work with Gary to get the post posted. Got a motion by Alderman Kerwin. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Proceed.
Thank you very much.
We'll work on the legal stuff later.
Sorry, legally, that motion doesn't...
Well, it's just, yeah, it's a motion for consensus to think everybody...
So we'll have a formal motion at the next meeting.
Absolutely. But I wanted to give them an opportunity to know that they're all in favor of the motion. That's why I just...
Consensus. Consensus.
When it's put in, we will give an invitation. Hopefully, all of you will be able to come to the unveiling of the Little Free Library. It will be open for administration, of course, the city, and we want the community to know.
We'll have a formal motion on our November 3rd meeting, so it's legal.
Excellent. Fantastic. Thank you very much, we have it.
All right, also on the mayor's report, we have...
Christie, the book is over.
Is that the book?
Yeah, you're all right. A couple other things on the mayor's report. First is a mayor appointment. Brian Humphries, this is to the police pension board. Not police commission, this is a police pension board. These are selected by the police officers, I believe, for a two-year term. You got that motion?
Yes.
Oh, do you need some policemen?
No, this is, no, police pension.
Fine, well, we got a lot of policemen that I don't know.
I'd like to approve the mayor appointment of Brian Humphries to Wilmington Police Pension Board for two years.
A motion by Alderman Evans, fifth, second.
I'm second.
Second by Alderman Larry Hall. Any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent, motion passes.
I'd also like to advise, the council, that I'll be looking to appoint Lauren Burkey to the vacant police commission, spot vacated by B. Rappel. What I will do is I will have staff email his contact information if they'd like to contact him. Lauren Burkey's been living in the city for the past 11 years. She's part of Wilmington, in effect, she's in charge of Wilmington Soccer Club, as well as involved in baseball as well, Sharks guys, so... If anybody wants to reach out to him, get to going, and then I have a motion for the November 3rd meeting and have the president in Congress, so I think he does. Lastly, he's also not on here, November 7th. I know the chief's not here, but November 7th will be an open house for the Wilmington Police Department. So we'll have an open house, details to follow, just a few hours, to let everybody have the opportunity to come see our new police department. All right, next up?
Do we have any idea what the odds are to be?
No, we'll put that stuff together. I disclose, it was like we'll squeeze the data out of it, so... All right, citizens' comments? Do we have any citizens' comments today?
Citizen comments right now.
Okay, yeah, I can't...
Introduce yourself.
My name is Renee Jolima and I live in Wilmington. I live in an apartment up at First. And we seem to have this situation every year where unless you have a water bill, you get no kind of notice or anything about the sticker. And it's something that's, you know, easy to forget because it's once a year and, I mean, you get a bill for everything else, but no reminder or anything. And I hear the same thing each year, they're like, "Well, your landlord is responsible." But we can't make the landlord give us anything. So it gets really costly every year that you forget. I had to buy a sticker and that was $50 instead of $25. I got a ticket and that's $100, now $125. So, you know, it gets pretty costly each year and I talk to, I mean, if they could just send something, a reminder, I mean, almost every address in the city, you know, somebody has a car they drive, and, you know, just a reminder that it's due so that we don't overlook it every year. And it just seems to be, you know, a hardship for other people that I talk to too in my area, you know. So I guess what I'm asking for is some kind of a notice that we can just at least get to the address of, not to a name, even if we don't have a water bill, so that we know this is due and we can, you know, have a lot better opportunity to pay it on time. And secondly, the $125 ticket, I already had to pay $50 for the sticker, you know, if they can drop that ticket. So I talked to Steve Evans and Frank Strutter and so, Harry.
As far as the ticket goes, I would have to go in front of adjudication because that's done by the officer. We wouldn't have any authority. I don't know what the process is on why you do or do not get one. I know we put it in the local papers. We try to get it poured out as much as possible, but a lot of people, it becomes habit after we've put it through ourselves, we just will get one. You know, we can look and see what type of remedies can come over in the future if people don't get water bills. I know we probably as a staff don't know who gets the water bill and who doesn't.
Right.
We'll just send the bill out and that should be always attached. And I can find out if there's any, you know, way in the future too.
Like I told Frank too, I talked to Frank on the phone, yeah, Steve, you know, even if it's just a courtesy, a bill, a reminder, because, I mean, anybody that you owe a bill to, they're going to send you something, you know, even if you pay, even if we, even if citizens paid a dollar or two, I mean, in the long run, that's going to save a lot of money and make that a lot more fair for everybody in the town. And not just if you have a water bill, you're going to get a reminder from the city, you know. It's really easy to remember, to forget. It's a really busy time of year, kids are going back to school. And like I said, it's a once a year thing and we're not even getting anything for it, you know, not even a courtesy factor.
And it's not, I heard a lot of people forget, I mean, we have, we have two months. You know, you have all of August, you have all of September to do the city stickers, so... But if there's ways, we've got to look at to possibly, you know, we don't know who receives water bills and who don't, especially in apartment complexes.
Yeah, well, nobody in an apartment complex gets a water bill.
Well, there probably are some apartment complexes where they do, we don't know. I don't know.
I've never heard of it. I mean, need an electric bill or a gas bill, not a water bill.
Maybe a suggestion, Mr. Mayor, would be just a simple postcard to every address.
I mean, I'll talk with the staff and see what the best way is and, you know, maybe we've always sent them out in relation to water bills, maybe we send them out in relation to addresses, what's that, you know, how that, what that impact is going to be. It's not going to be that, probably that much because we're just only apartment complexes and we got, what, maybe eight in town? So, and, you know, I don't know if you have a local landlord or if your landlord's from, you know, somebody out of town.
Well, they're kiki.
Yeah, so they're more of a corporation.
Right, yeah.
Where some apartment complexes are owned by people within town so that they have the ability to go out and reach. You're dealing with a business that probably doesn't really care. So, you know, we've got to look at those, we'll address those.
Yeah, it just seems like something really needs to come in the mail because, I mean, the newspaper, I hate to say it, but it's getting kind of obsolete. I mean, elderly people read the paper more than anybody. People aren't lying these days, you know.
Yeah, we have it online, we have it on Facebook. We do use all of social media. I think we try to, we try to get it poured out there as much as possible, you know. We're using Facebook.
What do you use on Facebook?
We use the City Wilmington's Facebook page. The Free Press Advocate has a Facebook page, it's on there.
City Wilmington's website, we're posting on the city website.
Yeah, we try to, yeah, just post it on our website as well.
And you can't register newsletters?
Mm-hmm.
So people register, anyone that registers on our website, we could lose bulletins, you could get notice, but still, we work on a few more things.
Well, obviously, the best way would be through the mail like you get every other bill because that's, I think, the easiest way really to keep track of it and to remember is you do owe a bill. I know myself, there they are.
It's a catch 22 because a lot of people go, it's just junk bill and they throw it off to the side, you know. Sometimes it's a no-win situation. We try to, we try to get it out there as much as we can.
Right, but if we live in this town, we know the consequences, so I don't think they're going to throw away if they know they owe it, you know what I mean?
Well, yeah.
At least they got the reminder if they do throw away.
The issue is, yeah, the issue here is, you know, I try not to necessarily...
Right, and like any other town I've been in, for any sticker that's ever expired, I mean, I show it to the judge and, "Okay, you know, you're fine." Here, I mean, I'm paying $50, I pay already for the sticker.
But have you gone to the adjudication hearing yet?
No, this is anything at first.
That's what you, you got to present that case to the adjudication judge, because that's what we offer now. In the past, before we had adjudication, you'd have to go to the local court at nine o'clock in the morning and plead your case and you'd get judged, you know. Adjudication's a lot different, they're looking for compliance more than they are for anything else. So you have an opportunity to present your case to the adjudication judge, which is in the evening. And, you know, she has fully waived, she has fully waived, she could, you know, it's up there, I'm not going to tell her what she should do.
If it's the same lady, if you were handicapped, she would, if you, if you were missing two legs, she wouldn't drop it.
So that goes absolutely nowhere.
It's just the way, this is the process we go through.
Yeah, okay. It's really a hardship on the citizens here because it's just like, these small things were just getting like slammed with tickets. And you're not, it's not happening in other towns that I've lived in. And I know like Wilmington needs revenue, but, you know, they just put a dollar general in, I mean, put some more things in here and stop doing this to people. Because I don't, I don't have a lot of income and I don't have money for this, you know, this is just...
We work every day to try to bring things in.
I mean, to me, this just needs to stop. This is, I mean, the city knows how much money they're getting for the citizens on this. You know, they're constantly putting tickets on my cars. And if we, I mean, if you owe a bill, I mean, just have the courtesy of just sending something out to people so that they can at least have a reminder if they don't have a water bill or anything, you know, people in apartments don't have water bills. So, you know...
Do you have a city sticker from last year?
Yes, I do. Well, I mean, I've already got the new city sticker.
Yeah, but you had the one from last year.
I did, I had the one from last year.
Is there a date on the city sticker?
What is it?
There's a date on all the city stickers, this is the expiration.
Yeah, I know. What I do is I scrape, I scrape upfield sticker and I put it all the way down at the bottom of my window so I don't really, you know, go with it so well.
So this year, you go, put it on the bottom, left-hand side, and you won't show. So like when I was walking my car truck the other day, I looked and you can see it right there, so it's kind of reminded.
Yeah.
But, I mean, we know what you're talking about, we've already been talking about it.
I mean, I just hate, I mean, I know where you guys are coming from, you don't want us to remind you, but if people owe you money, then it's just, it's just a courtesy thing you do, not just if you have a water bill.
We don't think we do. We don't want to send reminders. We'll look at a system.
Especially dealing with apartment complexes.
Yeah, I think what the mayor said earlier was maybe send postcards out to the apartments, you know, apartment A, B, whatever.
And as far as this ticket, I mean, is there anything else I can do because that's just a no-go?
That's nothing we can handle. The ticket's been issued, that has to go to adjudication. We have no...
Whoever she is, she's trained to do one thing and that's get money. So we've already been there, done that before.
Okay, I can't, I can't say anything about that.
Yeah, okay, well...
Thank you for coming in, Tom.
Well, thanks, I appreciate it. And hopefully next year, if you guys could do something, at least a courtesy reminder. I know a lot of people would really appreciate it.
They can see that expiration.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Renee, thank you.
Any other citizens' comments?
Margaret, I just want to say that when I lived on the apartments on Kailua with my daughter, Nick's and Matt's funeral home, I always got a notice for a city sticker. And then when I moved to Wabash, I didn't get one because I didn't own the house. And so then they put me down, then like Roger gets a water bill because he's a homeowner and then I get one also of the apartments on Kailua. For the five years I lived there, I did get a...
Some apartments, some are different. We just have, we just kept putting the rest out, so... Okay. Any other citizens' comments this year?
I'd like to recognize that our former Alderman, Ward Forehand, Ellen Hobbie is with us tonight. Ellen?
She's here to keep her son in check.
Is that what she does?
Or me, I don't know.
Or both.
It's a tough job, but she can do it.
All right, finding its own commission. Their next scheduled meeting is scheduled for Thursday, November 5th at 6:00 PM. Many reports, building grounds, parks, health and safety, Alderman Persick, Alderman Dan.
I move to approve the appointment of Pamela J., oh, is that Tharge?
Pamela J.?
On the other side, there's...
What is it?
It's Tarji.
Tarji.
Yes, thank you.
As supplemental park time building inspector, Kyle Shelby, co-enforcer, enforcement officer, whose job responsibilities shall be to enforce the city's building and zoning ordinances, including initially initiating administrative adjudication violations and those other duties as directed and writing by the city administrator at a rate of $20 per hour.
Alderman Persick, do you have a staff? Any discussion?
You're going to be a busy lady.
It's okay, I'll go for it. Thank you very much.
Alderman Dan and I kept sitting with Tony and we spent probably about 45 minutes, half hour, and went real well. I think she'll, personality-wise, I think she'll fit in and of course, her pronouncing speakers on the jury, yeah.
Because I personally haven't had the opportunity to talk to her.
Yeah.
I've been in a shutdown mode, but anyway, you know, definitely rely on these...
I could be wrong, Mayor, but it'll be fine.
You've done a great job in the past, I'm not worried about that.
Very nice to meet you. And I'm sure we'll get to sit down and talk.
Oh, I'm sure we will.
Thank you.
But no, it's good to have you here. And as Alderman Stuter said, your task will be rather large as it starts out, but I think as we continue to go through it, I think it'll be a bunch of great benefits to the city as we go forward, so...
I think so too. Welcome aboard. Thank you very much.
We've only got the motion. Any other discussion? Roll call vote please.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent, motion passes.
Welcome.
And put all of our phone numbers on your speed dial.
Yeah, what's your number? Don't leave until we get your phone.
All right.
Their next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, November 11th, 2015, at 6:30 PM.
Water, sewer, streets and alleys, Alderman Stuter, Alderman Kerwin?
Mr. Mayor, I have a motion here, but from our finance committee meeting, we have projected only $303,000 and then the motion is $317,000 plus?
No. The motion's correct. The slip of bid is, we're wanting to bid and we need to, I would recommend changing the agenda, I want you to pass number two first. That's the resolution that authorizes the expenditures for two and three for the MFT funds and then pass the bid. And what's, what's going on with, with IDA, we did, we did get a notice today for local roads. They will approve resolutions on anticipated funds that are in hold, but what the state said, resolution, what it basically is going to do is, it's just when the money comes in, it authorizes for the treasurer and the city council to expend those motor fuel tax bonds. So once we do bid, we do know we got a cap and we need to hold off on something in the project because we don't have the funds coming in from the state, then we'll have to evaluate that as the project progresses.
Okay, so I'm going to move to the, number two?
Yeah, I go number two first.
Number two resolution. Number two. I move to approve Resolution 2015-13, a resolution for improvement, improvement by municipality under the Illinois Highway Code, alley and roadway improvements.
A motion by Alderman Kerwin, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Stuter. Any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
No.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Six yes, one no, one absent, motion passes.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. I move to approve Resolution 2015-14, a resolution for maintenance of streets and highways by municipality under the Illinois Highway Code, snow and ice control.
A motion by Alderman Kerwin, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Persick. Any discussion?
Is this, is this covering the salt or is this removed?
Yeah, this is the, we had in, we had in the original motion, the original resolution, we had $70,000 for salt and maintenance. So now that we know what the potential price is, we're reducing that resolution so that we can, we can spend those dollars just for salt and should be for $30,000, correct?
Correct. So I guess the question I got right now then is, how much, that's part of the MFT money too, correct? So currently, right now, we have $303,000 and that $30,000 is coming off of that $330,000?
Yes, sir.
I mean, 303, I'm sorry. Okay. That's all I got.
All right, any further discussion? Roll call vote please.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
No.
Alderman Kirby Hall? Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Studer.
Yes.
Six yes, one, um, no, one absent, motion passes.
Yep.
Alright, uh, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve an award bid for the 2015 MFT mill in Overly project, the deconstruction, the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of $317,876.65 as recommended by city engineer, Colby Zomitis.
A motion by Alderman Kerwin, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Studer, any discussion? Roqavo, please.
Alderman Kerwin.
Yes.
Alderman Studer.
Yes.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall.
No.
Alderman Persick.
Yes.
Six yes, one no, one absent, motion passes.
Next final one, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the water mile proposal as submitted by Strand and Associates Incorporated.
A motion by Alderman Kerwin, do we have a second? Second by Alderman Evans, any discussion?
We did receive notice from Prologis that we will pay for this, we can invest in this project.
Any further discussion? Roqavo, please.
Alderman Kerwin.
Yes.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Studer.
Yes.
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Persick.
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent, motion passes.
Next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, November 11, 2015, at 5:30 PM.
Please ask to Alderman Studer, Alderman Tudor.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the commercial electronic system equipment lease contract for three hybrid 16-channel analog eight-channel IP 3TB DVRs.
A lot of IT stuff, man.
Yeah.
A motion by Alderman Studer, do we have a second? Second by Alderman Studer, any discussion?
Wasn't they supposed to put a price in here for the three?
I don't, I don't want, the only thing that I believe, the only thing we were gonna ask was that, to make sure it was compatible with.
Well, we asked, yeah, but I thought, yeah, but I thought we wanted a price in there not to exceed.
You know, we did have one too, didn't we? We had one committed.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
We have, anybody have a copy of that bulletin?
Well, you're, you're approving the lease, which is $366 per month, okay? For.
How many months?
Sixty months.
How about not to exceed $370 a month?
Okay, I move to approve the commercial electronic systems equipment lease contract for three hybrid 16-channel analog eight-channel IP 3TB DVRs for an amount not to exceed $366.1.
How long?
Alright, your motion still standing, or your second still standing?
Yes, it does.
Any further discussion? Roqavo, please.
Alderman Studer.
Yes.
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Persick.
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin.
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent, motion passes.
Okay, one more, I move to approve the purchase of one motorcycle unit, 2008 Harley-Davidson Electric Life, in the amount not to exceed $10,000 contingent upon the sale of surplus items.
Motion by Alderman Studer, do we have a second?
I have it.
Second by Alderman Studer, any discussion?
I did receive an update from, from the chief, he's on a call, Salt Holland still has the, uh, the unit available to purchase and hopes to have the sale of surplus property postponed by the next week or so.
Any further discussion? Roqavo.
Alderman Studer.
Yes.
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Persick.
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin.
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent, motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, November 10, 2015, at 5:30 PM.
Finance administration, land acquisition, Alderman Studer, Alderman Studer.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the accounts payable report in the amount of $585,101.46 and $0.46 in the September 2015 collections report in the amount of $388,547.19 as presented by the city account.
Motion by Alderman Studer, do we have a second? Second, second, Alderman Kerwin, any discussion? Roqavo, please.
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin.
Yes.
Alderman Persick.
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Studer.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent, motion passes.
Yep.
Next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, November 17th at 6:00 PM.
Uh, let's see, Alderman Studer, Alderman Kirby Hall, Alderman Evans.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have a first read for the National Free Parks Board meetings. Next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, November 10, 2013, at 6:00 PM.
Personnel collect parking, Alderman Persick.
Uh, we will have executive session tonight.
City engineers report, Mr. Zomitis.
Yeah, I'm, page is 44 and 45, I got my updated, uh, engineers report and athletic development report, just kinda touching on the ones that have changed since we last met. On Route 102, near Phillips Drive, the state is working on storm sewer connectivity project, have been contacted by their engineers to meet out there in the next week or so to kinda discuss topographic surveys, stuff they've done themselves, they kinda talk about our storm sewer and how it, uh, uh, closes drains to their bitches and, uh, the overall plan is to get that COVID under 102 cleaned out and to get the bitches on both sides regraded, flow south to where they belong.
I've been along to Danny's school, just to rain.
Yes, and that's exactly why we want to talk to them before they go too much, they're on the way, we want to show them what we have on the city then, what, how it's affecting us, or how it has over here, so, area, I would be with them, like I said, actually big figures, so we're trying to schedule some time to do that. The high-speed rail, there hasn't been really much changes with most of those projects. I know there's been talk with some of the business owners about, they've provided plans on their actual lots, lots itself, but the city really hasn't been involved too much with them, we've been contacted by these people, they've been invited to a meeting.
So there's been discussion as part of their location, right?
Nothing there, nothing really changed, and what we've seen is more on, on their access to it.
There's one, you did get the, the plans for strip line. They designed for strip line.
Yeah.
Interchange.
Yeah, try and make those and stuff like.
That was more of an IDA project and a rail project.
That actually started with his, his high-speed rail, so it isn't.
Yeah. The public area, they said it was an IDA.
Yeah, they had to realign that to meet the requirements.
Is that, is that why the trailer park was closing out there, or is that being acquired?
Fossil rock.
Fossil rock, yeah. I had heard, I had heard it's closing, is that?
November 1st is supposed to shut down.
I have same thing.
I haven't heard anything. I know they used to close out in the winter time, every winter they closed, they used to all the time.
I heard the same.
But I mean, that's nowhere near, there's a railroad tracks.
Yeah.
That's not even in the city.
That's a workwear. Yeah, so that's what, I guess.
It's a rumor, find out what you can. I heard they told people to get your trailers out and they out by November.
They got wheels in that, they gotta go, if it's permanent structure, it can stay.
They're reselling it or they're selling it off or what they're doing.
I don't know, I know some people out there and they told me that they gotta find a new place, first or something.
Mike, did me interrupt?
I'm sorry, no. Like I said, hearing those plans, I sent out some information on our new water main, they want to know where, the state utilities were on those plans, but, uh, those are very preliminary plans that are installed for the transit. As you're aware, the water mains in on, on 53, basically just got some restorations, some restriping, a new bit, still waiting to hear from Austin Tyler on MFT, we just approved, so we work with IDA for deconstruction in the next week or two to get, get rolling that, I mean, on the street, lay out that, all those, building overlays and alley improvements out right now. And as far as the economic development reports, Michelin has pretty much completed, this is a place that's where their petrol staffing center, they're actually out there paving their truck parking lot the last couple days, they got most of the concrete pavement in.
Lot of asphalt, though.
Huh?
Lot of asphalt.
Yes, yes.
Lot of asphalt.
They drive by there now and.
It's different.
It's like a football field, asphalt.
That's thick, too.
Yeah, it's thick, it's new. Yeah, they got another layer to put on top of.
Oh, yeah.
Freezeability, they're, they're out there pouring the, the concrete, I had it, it was a masquerading building B, they said that the office space is really finalized, last